I'd like to call this special, this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on February 8th. It's 7:02. 7:02. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Chris? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, Chris Taylor, 93 West Avenue. I just don't want to belabor the point. I know that the emails have gone out. I'm, you know, Commissioner on the Commission for Parks and Recreation. I know that we will be discussing, or you will be discussing through the budget process, the $50,000 for Pear Tree Point. As a member of the Pear Tree Point Working Group, I just wanted to urge the motion to accept those funds. We went through and had a survey of over 2,500 town residents and the view of most residents was very clear that the building facility as is needs to be kept up and updated. The $50,000 would go to helping not only the outside but the inside, and we believe that those funds would be greatly needed. And I think it was great to get that feedback from the community. So, thank you all very much and urge you to vote in favor.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments from our public that's here? Kate, do we have anybody?
No.
Next order of business is to discuss and take action on a request for a special appropriation of $142,714 for a heart and hypertension claim settlement. And Kate will go over this.
So, Park and Hypertension Law says police officers and firefighters, which we don't have to worry about because we're volunteers, but police officers hired before a certain date who are diagnosed with heart conditions or hypertension, it is automatically presumed that it's a result of their work. And so, it does happen where an officer will at some point file a claim that they've had some kind of heart condition or hypertension. And sometimes we're just paying medical bills or other times there is a settlement if a doctor has determined that there is a certain level of impairment. So, that was the situation with one of our officers. And it took quite a while to arrive at the settlement because we had independent medical exams and such where we finally agreed upon a rating. You know, often what happens is it, the settlement is done before they retire or anything, and so we're paying them out on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis, you know, during that period. But this officer was about to retire, so, and the claim dates back to 2019 is a start date. So unfortunately, we have to pay the full amount in a lump sum. So, what we're asking you to approve is the funding, the special appropriation, which will go to the Board of Finance and then the RTM.
Do we have any more of these in the works?
So, right now, I believe there are only three officers remaining who were on the force before that date where it's just an automatic presumption.
Right.
Anybody hired after that date, if they make a claim, it's treated more like a workers' comp claim where they would have to prove that it was caused by their, by their work. And we did recently agree to hire Kerma to serve as our third-party administrator with these claims because they can be very complicated. So, we moved to do that with them.
Any other questions, Kate?
We've done this in the past?
Paid these kinds of settlements?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, you know, like I said, some of them, we own them for quite a while because if they have ongoing medical, you know, procedures, medications, they, we have to pay those even post-retirement.
Is there something in place that would provide periodic testing or medical assessments to determine whether something like this is happening and, for lack of a better phrase, nip it in the bud, if you will, and either provide, get the person affected into less strenuous work or something like that so that this doesn't fester and turn into a claim?
Well, I don't think you'd be able to, you wouldn't be able to force them into retirement unless they were medically enabled to be an officer.
No, no, another role within the police department.
It doesn't matter what role they're in. They could be, have been assigned to a desk job for 20 years. And if they would have, you know, if they were hired before that date, they would have been presumed to have the, but, to your question, one of the items in the police budget was a $10,000 wellness line.
Yeah.
And if you recall, the police talking about, you know, part of it is to encourage more physical fitness, but another part of it is to do some testing, calcium cardiac testing, to try and catch things earlier. And for, you know, these are officers who would not have that automatic presumption, but to identify problems and get them treated at an earlier date.
Do you recall when the hire date was when we changed?
It was not us, it was the state. I want to say 96.
Okay.
But I do know our HR director had said there are only three officers remaining that qualify.
And none have exhibited any symptoms or anything else?
None have indicated that they've been diagnosed. And they, you know, but that doesn't mean, you know, until the point, they could still, you know?
Right.
It's not on.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions for Kate?
Sorry for the interrupt.
All right. May I have a motion to approve a special appropriation for $142,714 for a heart and hypertension claim settlement? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, Kate? Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on the recommendation of the budget for fiscal year 23, '24. So...
Are you just going to public comment or can I just hand you something?
Sure.
This is just a public comment. What one do you have?
This is the CARP.
Okay, that was, yeah, was the same.
Remember, I made a comment about what the De'Arian, Major Center said. They did study for three months this summer, two to three times a week, three high school seniors working with Molly Robinson, the program director, and the deox of general innovation. It's usually should be 10 to 16 percent and it's down to 5.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. You good, Jen?
Just waiting for a remote to get the screens on because this one is not working.
It hasn't been lighting. Did you find any chance to see it?
No.
Well, you might have to bring that one.
Oh, there's one. Okay. Put it thing, all right, bounce. Okay.
Do we have that to the budget?
The solar powered ones?
I think they died.
Yeah. Okay. So, Kate, how do you want to do this?
Do you want to go over the list?
Yeah.
To open ours?
Okay. So, the open items that we have are the dispatcher chairs. I thought we've all loaded on that, though.
I had only that, the only thing that you had actually all agreed upon was the personnel issues.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go through them really quick. So, we have the dispatcher chairs, we have the cherry lawn pond aerator, the second parking ranger, the CAD for the police in Capitol, the street sweeper in Capitol, the Kids in Crisis grant, the Pear Tree Bath House, the Museum of Darien grant. And I think, Kate, the only other thing that I didn't see on here was if you had any extra information on the premium, medical premium?
Nothing new. We haven't had a chance to go through the analysis yet to, you know, we just got it yesterday. So, there is the potential to reduce it further than the $30,000 we talked about yesterday. But I'm just not comfortable saying, yeah, let's go all the way down without having to get a chance to look fully through the proposal from the second carrier.
Okay. So, Jen, what do you have there included? Is the 30 included there?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So, maybe, maybe go back up and go to where we are currently with the changes that we made yesterday?
So, where you are right now in your Board of Selectmen budget is a 4.28% increase. When you include the library and net out taxes, taxes to be raised for operations is actually a decrease of 0.62%. And then on capital, total capital is an increase of 21.86%. And taxes needed for capital, which is misleading because so much is done by the Board of Finance on how to finance that, is up 552%. But Board of Finance will make decisions on bonding and use of fund balance to fund capital.
Okay.
So, that's why we want to focus on that one.
Okay. And that was, Kate, do you remember where we started on, where did you start on capital? Ignoring Hanson and Weed, the big projects? You remember?
The total was 7 million. What the percentage was, I don't know that I ever actually calculated.
Well, that was the department request.
Yeah.
What you had in your town administrator proposed was budget was 4,156.
Right. I'm asking what was in the department request, but that included...
It was over 7 million.
That included...
Two and a half.
Two and a half million that I said should come out and be addressed independently of the budget.
Okay. Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions so far on kind of where we are? No? All right. So, let's go through these items. The dispatch chairs, that is, I think, like a $12,000 item, right?
$10,495.
Okay. All right.
I support that. It's coming from your book.
It's coming from... Excuse me, it's the President. It's actually my son.
Close to.
Can I call you later? Sorry about that. Okay, the dispatcher chairs. I think that Sarah and I were in support of this.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion?
Support a moment.
Good.
Okay. That's in. All right, the cherry lawn pond aerator. We received a lot of information. I think, I appreciate the, all of the emails from everybody. It shows, shows that you're paying attention, which is terrific. And I also really appreciated the message from the Nature Center and the pictures that Patty brought in. I personally wanted to just take another look at this because it was kind of a new concept. So, I talked to Pam. It is, you know, a two-year, two-year-old kind of idea, so it is relatively new. But I'm comfortable with what I read as far as, you know, warranty, number of hours, being able to handle the size of the pond. It's pretty cold here. How does that work out? So, I'm not a pond aerator expert by any means, although I do know a little more now than before. So, I personally am in support of this. Any discussion? Any thoughts?
Support me yesterday and feel comfortable about it today as well.
Agreed.
Yep. John?
Yeah, I mean, you just look aesthetically at how the pond looks. If people are going to be spending time around there, we really ought to have an investment like this that cleans that up. And if it doesn't work 100%, we ought to be prepared to do something more. So, anyway, yeah, I'm supportive.
Okay. And you know what? And I think also all the work that was done there already, this kind of, I think, finishes off that area, so I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Okay, we're in agreement. That's in. Second parking ranger. I'm going to let Kate explain this a little bit more.
The second parking ranger, first, most importantly, the parking fund is self-supporting, so any change you make here does not impact the taxes. And with the parking returning to more normal levels, we need the second ranger to assist with the ticketing, the enforcement, but also maintenance around the station. So, they don't just ticket at the park stations and at the merchant lots downtown. They also do winter snow removal, ice removal from the platforms. They also do landscaping and they do maintenance of the buildings, like cleaning the bathrooms and cleaning the insides of the buildings. So, with only one, it's a challenge to get it all done. So, we would like to have that second ranger back. And I did not, I was, I was not willing to until I could see proof that the fund could support it. And it can.
So, they do the maintenance at the train stations?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Clean the bathrooms?
Clean bathrooms, keep the platform clear of snow and ice, you know, the parking lots. And they do, they do some of the landscaping at the stations.
So, we've, the office has received some complaints about the state of the station inside. You know, it's not always as clean as it could be. And if you remember, we extended the hours for the station. So, I'm in support of this.
Yep, same.
Sarah, Mike?
I guess my question is, and I do support it now I'm using the train, so I can appreciate that a little bit more. You say it's a closed system.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there, is there an expectation that this person would be writing enough tickets to fund their position?
Yes. Yes. If we, when we look at the history, it's not just the tickets, it's also the daily parking. And part of the enforcement is not just ticketing, but also getting the people to, who have not been paying, to pay. But yes, in normal years, we, we ticket over, over $100,000.
Well, I won't make a federal case out of it, but my position about this hire is unchanged, but I see the, I see the numbers, so. But I'm not in favor of this add.
Okay. All right, Marcy?
If it's self-funding, then I'm in favor of it. If it's something that we have to pull out of our budget, I can't see the purpose of it at this point, but if you can say it's self-funding, then I support it.
Kate, what happens if, for whatever reason, our numbers don't return to normal and we don't have the kind of volume of revenue coming in? How does that position get added?
We would lay them off.
We did that before. And does it need to be a full-time? Could it be a half-time or a part-time?
I don't know that we'd be able to do it on a part-time basis.
Okay.
We have not explored that option.
Okay.
I do think we need a full-time.
Okay.
Okay. So, I believe, Mike, you are not in favor of this. Sarah, you're still in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll leave the parking ranger in. Okay. All right, you know what? We have a lot of, well, we have a few park people, park and rec people. So, let's go to the bath house, the Pear Tree Bath House. We received some information, which I think, I know Patty you saw, Chris you probably saw also, about what's desired over there. And, no, I think, I think it's clear that something needs to be done there. It's a beautiful beach and there's been a lot of community interest in sprucing things up over there. I think, you know, I'm, I did talk with Pam today and I, she, you know, she did point out that sinks, faucets, mirrors, that kind of thing were installed last year. So, I'm, I'm hopeful that the $50,000 will be used wisely and if we don't need to replace things that we just purchased, that would be, that would be good. But I guess that's where I stand, is I see the value in this. Anyone comments? Sarah?
I think this is, this refresh has been something that the folks who've been using that beach for long, have wanted for a long time. And it has been, I think it was the impetus for doing some of the work years ago. And we know that that may not have been able to go forward in that shape or size that it was originally proposed, but I do think that this work still needs to get done. And I think the people who use that facility would really appreciate...
Right.
Having it updated and it doesn't reflect how we see or use some of the other facilities in our town. It's certainly not the same and let's bring it up to us people.
Right. I think that having the person that worked at Weed work on this would be, would be great. Mike, any thoughts?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I think the materials are pretty self-explanatory and it's been a long time in coming, so I think it's time to commit to this.
And the other thing is it's not controversial, right? So, we're at a point now where making an investment like this, that there's broad consensus that this is what everybody wants, it's just much easier than, than some of the other stuff they'd considered before, so absolutely.
I think loud and clear, the survey that was sent out by the Park and Rec Department really is saying that this is a priority for constituents and I'm willing to support that.
Right. Okay. The $50,000 Pear Tree Bath House improvement is, is on. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you are more than welcome to stay, but if you want to...
I got to vote on the whole budget, so I'm just...
Jett-o.
You can hit the red button.
Quick question. Is there a plan laying out of how they're spending $50,000?
Yes, it was very specific.
Yeah, we just got it this afternoon.
Yes.
Because we haven't had that shared.
Well, you know what? The plan...
Tony Schwartz has it.
Okay. Okay. Jack, again, it's really just hard for people that are watching the meeting, if you're over there talking. But to answer your question, there was a, you know, kind of a back of an envelope of what would be done there. The numbers, you know, I think, need a little work, but I'm confident that the, that the Park and Rec Department will, will do a good job. And I'm happy to send out what we have here, but as a finance person, you'll see that the numbers don't quite kind of add up.
Just so you hear me.
Sure.
I agree that it needs to be done.
Jack, just identify yourself.
Oh, Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street, Chair of F and B Committee in the RTM. I agree it needs to be done. I'm just, from a financial perspective, like to see that it's laid out with plans so that we are not surprised with what's going on. That's my only comment.
Okay. We're finished on, on the bath house. Okay, next, let's, let's go over the Kids in Crisis grant. We were increasing that, right, Kate?
Yes.
Okay.
I backed that. I think they've been doing quite a bit in the last year...
Right.
For the town and the schools.
Right. They've been increasing their, their help for us, so...
Yes.
Mike, any thoughts?
In support of that.
No strong thoughts either way.
Yeah, I've been working with them a lot on the Mental Health Task Force and they are incredibly active and engaged in this town. I think that this is something that they could definitely use and support.
Yeah. And they actually gave numbers of how many people they've helped.
Yep.
So, that, that was a strong thing for me. Okay. The museum, so Kate, that's a, Jen, that's a yes? Okay, Museum of Darien grant, that was, Kate, what was that? That was...
They asked for 20. I had put them back to 10, which is what they had been funded for, for the last several years.
Okay. I think, you know, I gave this a little bit of thought and, you know, Museum of Darien is, they are doing a service for our town, similar to, you know, the library. And I think we fund about 80% of the library right now, so what, what do we fund for other groups?
The depot, we fund about 11% of their budget. Kids in Crisis, it's not even 0.01. It's so small. Their budget is like 9 million, so 5,000 is nothing. If we do the full 20% that the museum requested, that would be 10% of their total budget.
Okay. Okay. Any thoughts?
Yes. It's a phenomenal facility. We're very lucky in this town to have it. I do think it helps our residents. My concern is that when folks pay taxes, they're not necessarily doing it, understanding that their, their money is now going to area nonprofits. Having worked in the nonprofit world, it is very near and dear to my heart. It is not an attempt to not want to fund them, but I just think we need to be very careful. The Museum of Darien is phenomenal. Most of our kids have gone through that. I can't remember the third grade trip or whatever it is. They're, they're great. What they've done, particularly over the, like everything that they've done is phenomenal. But I caution on giving an operating grant of 20,000 going forward. I do.
That's a reasonable viewpoint. I think they've been pretty careful in trying to say, look, this really is to support the archives that they maintain for research that people need to do...
Yep.
Or properties in Darien as opposed to their other activities like parades and kind of all that stuff. And so, that's, that's kind of where I draw the line. I wouldn't want to just support a nonprofit with a general operating grant. I think we go down that path at our peril. You're right about that. But these guys have a specific asset that they maintain on behalf of the town and it's the only place they can go to get these old records. So, I think in that regard, I actually agree with you. I think in this regard, they presented that case well and it makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, we've had, we've had people use this facility for just that, to, to research documents, so I, I see the value of that. Mike, have any?
You know, I was persuaded by what John said last night. The only caveat I would add, I would put in that is that that budget could, or that grant could certainly be subject to a, you know, cut next year. I know we talked about the idea being that it would be going from 10 to 20, would remain at 20, but I just would put it on notice that that might not necessarily be the case. It's a year-to-year consideration.
They would have to justify it every year, no doubt. I agree with that.
And, you know, we could have, like, we could have a situation where I, I'm very appreciative of the Chamber of Commerce, right, that came back and said, "Thank you so much for the grant last year. We are, we are not applying for one this year." So, but I, I see the creep problem. I absolutely... Marcy, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I also am persuaded by John talking about the archives. I think that's an important asset in our town and it needs to be preserved.
But these guys have a specific asset that they maintain on behalf of the town and it's the only place they can go to get these old records. So, I think in that regard, I, I actually agree with you. I think in this regard, they presented that case well and, and it makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, we've had, we've, we've had people use this facility for just that, to, to research, um, documents, so I, I, I see the value of that. Mike, have any?
You know, I, I was persuaded by, uh, what John said, uh, last night. The only caveat I would add, uh, I would put in that is that, uh, that budget could, or that grant could certainly be subject to a, you know, cut, uh, next year. I know we talked about the idea being that it would be going from 10 to 20, it would remain at 20, but I just would put it on notice that that might not necessarily be the case. It's a year-to-year consideration.
They would have to justify it every year, no doubt. I agree with that.
And you know, we could have, like, we could have a situation where, um, I, I'm very appreciative of the Chamber of Commerce, right? That came back and said, thank you so much for the grant last year. We are, we are not applying for one this year. So, um, but I, I, I see the creep problem. I absolutely. Marcy, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I've also been persuaded by John, um, talking about the, the archives. I think that's an important asset in our town and it needs to be preserved. And, uh, I'm willing to take on that expense.
Okay. All right, so we're in agreement?
Yep.
Okay, Jen, so that stays?
Yeah, that goes, that goes up.
Oh, that goes up, sorry.
To 20.
Next is, well, next we'll go over the, um, the computer-aided dispatch. That was the, um, the police budget item for 226, right Kate?
Yes.
Right. And, um, I spoke with the chief yesterday and Kate spoke with the chief again today on this item and, um, Kate, you want to take it away?
So what, what's going on is we have computer-aided dispatch now and it needs to be upgraded and we've had great difficulty with the current firm in getting the upgrades that we need. They were not doing field work during COVID. They've been sold two times. Um, trying to identify representatives has been difficult. But the chief police, it, it's possible that it could still be done, that we might be able to get them to, um, do it. Whether it would be hold at the prices that we had previously agreed to pre-COVID, we don't know that for sure. And one of the things he said to me today was he doesn't want to throw good money after bad. The software that he would be proposing, switching to, is one that's used by many more towns in Connecticut. Lower support cost on an annual basis, no additional charges if the state comes out with new forms that we have to file. Where the existing software company has always charged us for any new forms. And would get us up to date with things like e-citations, which we are not capable of doing now, but the state wants us to do it and we're one of the few towns still out there. So, we may be able to get the existing software provider to finally upgrade our system at a lower cost than the 226,000 that, um, the chief is asking for the new software. Um, we don't know what that number is. There is currently in the budget about, I think it's 54,000 in two different accounts related to, related to that, um, that software.
When you say 54,000 in two accounts, do you mean a balance or?
A balance, yes, a balance.
So it was budgeted by?
Budgeted. The upgrades were budgeted for.
Right, we just hadn't been able to get them to respond, right.
Which would, you know, theoretically, if you approve the new software, I would expect the Board of Finance to wipe those balances out. So it's, you know, it's a bit of a difficult decision. Do we take the chance on sticking with the old stuff? And hope that we can get this software company to do the upgrades we need and get that going? Or do we spend more and switch over to the, um, to a new software system? You know, the chief will work with whatever you, you decide.
And the, and the other thing is the maintenance is 50,000 currently that we're paying?
The maintenance on the new software would be $21,000 less per year.
So effectively, if it's 226 for the new and there's 56 sitting in accounts, it's a lower net cost.
Yes.
So it's a $30,000 reduction in.
Yes. But you've, you've also got to assume that, you know, upgrading the old software would still be a lesser cost than, than new, you know, the net on the other.
But, uh, oh, I mean, overall, the, the feeling is that this, this product is going south, if you will, with no appreciable reason to believe that it's going to turn around and get better for us. The chief can manage it if it doesn't get better, but there's no reasonable basis to believe that they're going to wake up and all of a sudden give us the kind of service that we expect. Is that fair?
You know, I, I think that's probably a fair statement that, you know, even if we were to get the upgrades that we want, what's our confidence level that on an ongoing basis that this is going to be, you know, working well for us?
Yeah, I think the chief has a, um, and already in a relationship with the company that they're looking at and it's used by the majority of other Fairfield County Police. So there's that. Then there's the zero relationship with this company, which is frustrating. So some of these answers the chief can't even get because there's, you know, so it, it could be that the upgrade is, is very reasonably priced. But we don't know because, you know, people aren't answering, so.
One option you do have is to, um, leave it in and let, continue to try and get to a resolution with the old software company and if we're able to, the Board of Finance can cut.
Is the current software a safety liability? Is it?
Not a safety liability, no. It's more of a, um, things that we cannot do electronically that we should be like the tickets. That we still handwrite tickets where the, um, the state doesn't, they want, the state wants everybody doing electronic tickets and we can't do that in the system.
And it's, and that, writing out those tickets is actually pretty onerous for our department also, so.
Can you, can we reduce the amount of the cost for the new system by the amount that's in the balance of the accounts or no?
I think you could, yes. Like, you know, I think the Board of Finance would be doing that anyway, but, um, I can't pull them up. I don't seem to have access to news on my laptop.
I don't either.
Okay.
So I don't know the exact amount.
Just curious.
I mean, if you gave me five minutes, I can go down to my office and get it.
But, you know, it's.
Might make it more palatable.
Well, you know, while you go move on to talking about another item, I'll run down to the office and, um.
But Kate, you're going to look to see if we can take the money out of those accounts?
I'm going to look for the amounts.
What happens?
Okay.
Because you basically, I'm supposing like, if we take those balances, you kind of force the Board of Finance hand that, you know, they're going to have to close those out or we somehow, um, transfer those balances into the account for the new software.
I think if we need to be focusing on a software system, it probably should be the newer one, not the older one. I think it makes sense for them to have the, the one.
Yep.
Okay. Well, why don't you go, why don't you talk about the sweeper and I will go get you the numbers.
Okay. So the sweeper is, uh, the, it's a 2000 and, we currently have a 2008 sweeper and the, um, replacement cost is $380,000. This was, you know, we discussed this a little bit, I think yesterday, and it's an item that, um, has had, did, did have some work on it. I don't know if it was last year or the year before. That was, um, um, you know, rather expensive. Fifteen, I think it was 15, 20,000, Jen? It was somewhere in there. I, I, you know, I, I talked to our Director of Public Works again today to, um, just to make sure and that is a, um, a relatively expensive, um, repair. And the sweeper is, um, it's mature. That's, that's, that's how we're determining this. It's mature, um, but it's, it's fine. So Ed's, um, Director Gentile, um, Mr. Gentile is, um, is okay with us on deferring this for a year. With the understanding that, you know, um, it is a 15-year-old piece of equipment that, um, you know.
Should go in next year's budget also.
It will, it will come back again
Yeah.
before us. Um, but he feels we can, we can get another year out of it. So, my recommendation is that we defer this at this time.
I'm good with that.
Fine.
Yep.
Um, I'm fine with that. I mean, do we have an idea in our head, like, what the burdens and possibilities are for items next year? I mean, we can put it off to next year, but
Right.
you know, all of a sudden next year is horrible that we have a better ability to, to do it now, even with what, uh, Mr. Gentile is saying. I, I just want to be comfortable that we're not, you know, overburdening what might be going on next year.
Right.
So what's on our six-year capital plan for next year, which hasn't had nearly the level of review that the, of the budget year has? Total's $9.4 million.
What is this here, Jen?
Uh, we are currently at about 4.1 million, was what's before you.
Big jump.
Yeah.
And that's before we look at debt service.
There's probably some items in there that would get pulled out for bonding, um, because it is the big picture of all the capital that we have.
You know, I'm not saying not to do it this year. I just wanted to make sure that we give that, you know, just a moment's, uh, you know.
That's a good point. Jen, are any of those items, are they, um, is it a fire apparatus?
For next year?
Yeah.
There's at least one.
Yes, there's 815,000 of that is a tanker.
Okay.
And then, um, I can just quickly look at the other.
And I do remember in this report, the safety report, that there were two additional coming up fire apparatus that they were recommending we replace, so that's a good point, Mike. So Mike's point, Kate, was, you know, um, pushing to next year when we might have, Kate's saying we have about nine million already lined up for next year.
So just one other large item that's in there, um, is a $3 million placeholder for a new parking lot in Bo Graham at Pear Tree. And that's what I think the bid package is supposed to be firming up and something of that level would meet Kate's requirement to pull it out and, you know, to get out of the annual budget. So that brings 25 down to closer to 5 million if we take out the apparatus and that.
Okay. John, you have any thoughts?
We've got a big capital budget next year, uh, but I don't think that's a reason to say we need to spend the money this year, right? We ought to spend the money when we need to spend the money. If they can get another year out of that particular apparatus, I'm okay with that, with deferring it until next year, irrespective of how much money we've got set aside or, or planned to spend for capital budgets for next year. So, given where we are with this budget, I'm okay with this, uh, being deferred.
And our capital this year, Kate, Jen, is up how much? If we didn't pull this?
22.
About $700,000.
22%?
Yeah, 20, 23%.
Okay. Marcy, any thoughts?
If we can get another year out of it, we should get another year out of it. Um, I, I definitely see your point. I think you're, I think that was a good, that was a good, uh, question. But, um, current state, the economy, I think it's smart to.
Just wait.
Just wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm torn.
I mean, I, I'm fine doing it. I just wanted to make sure we had the discussion about impact. It took a little bit of a forward-looking look for next year, so. I, that's, I can support deferring. That's, that's fine.
As long as they're able to use it.
Yeah.
Successfully.
I have two questions on this. Uh, Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street. I'm going to keep the same address. Is the repairs to this, um, sweeper going to be done this year and in his, the current year's budget? If not.
There are no repairs required right now.
All right. But if we, okay, so I, I'm just curious whether or not we had to add back
No, no.
15,000 to next year's budget for.
No, it's up and running. We're, we're just, we're just anticipating the worst and trying to quantify that. And the 15 to 20 is, um,
Estimate.
That, that's a pretty good problem.
Yeah. Um, my second thing is, I think that the percentage of your capital is high because if we move the grant money that used to be in capital over to revenue, if we add it back in, would that change the number of the requests?
No, that's just looking straight at the expenditures.
Just expenses.
Okay, just wanted to understand that. Thanks.
Okay. So Jen, we're going to defer that. Okay, so Kate, where do we end up on the accounts?
There is $55,022 currently set aside for the, um, upgrade, two pieces of the upgrade to the existing software.
So could we move that from accounts?
So you don't have that ability, but if basically you, you could force it, or at least force the Board of Finance to have that discussion by cutting the current request of 226 and change by 55,000.
I would support that.
I'd support that as well. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, do we miss anything, Jen? Kate?
Did we reduce accrued leave? Is that a discussion item that we?
Yeah, Kate brought that up last night.
I'm having second thoughts, honestly. I think I'm, I think we do.
Don't have enough knowledge to feel like I can lay in. I mean, there's a financial impact, but what's the right answer?
Well, it's, I think there's going, it's, it, you know, it's going to happen. Okay. The question is, how much would we be able to offset by, um, savings in full-time salary when there's vacancy? And, um.
We don't know.
We don't know. So, you know, it's, it's a bit of crap shoot, so, you know. If you cut it and we need it, we come back
Right.
and, um, ask for from contingency.
Right. So is your recommendation to hold?
My recommendation is if we can afford to leave it as it is.
Okay. I'll take your recommendation on that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Sarah, you good?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that stays. Okay. I think the only other thing we had was, um, we had talked about the funding for the Think Smart Before You Start campaign. And that's a $4,000 number. So I, we spoke before the Senior Men's Association today and one of the things that were, that, you know, they were showing a lot of concern about was, was traffic in town, speeding, um, not using signals. Please use your signals. Please don't roll through stop signs. So I think that this is a good campaign. I, I'm, um, I think, Mike, we would agree, maybe there are some things we could do differently with this, but we have some sunk costs in this and so I, I, I'm, in favor of continuing it with taking another look at maybe how we could do it a little better.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
How much is this?
4,000.
4,000.
And I don't think we, I don't think we ever cut it, right?
No, it's in there.
It's in there. So it doesn't change these numbers.
Correct.
But, um, it was something that we had kind of talked about, so.
Was there a match from somebody with the whole?
That was out of the, um.
The original funding was from the Police False Alarm Fund.
Okay, and they're not going to do that anymore?
The Police Commission's not going to do that anymore. So last year, some of the cost came from there and then the rest came from
Police Association.
from the general fund.
Oh, I thought.
Oh, the Police Association, in the initial year, the Police Association donated money towards it as well.
Yeah, Sarah, we're done.
Yeah. Was there a reason that they decided not to fund it again this year?
The Police Commission?
Yeah.
Not, I think just they have other uses for the funds in the False Alarm Fund.
But I would anticipate the, the Police Commission will continue to help us on this.
Okay.
Right?
No.
Well, who's running the campaign?
The indication that we had from them was that they were not going to put False Alarm Fund money towards this anymore.
No, when you say help, you mean man hours, not.
Oh, oh, not, yes.
Running the campaign.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I think we can, we'll get some help there. Okay, so.